Are you ready?
Are we ready?
All right, welcome to Groveland Planner Board Tuesday night, seven o'clock on the dot. I need a motion to open the meeting.
No motion.
Okay, all in, a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So, tonight is up as one forty-two King Street Performance Bond Release and approve, approval extension request.
You want to give him the mic?
The mic in the podium and the...
Yep.
Name and address.
So, my name is Matthew Connors, I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of Massachusetts and other states, I'm also the owner of the property. My official address is nine thirty-six Rollos Road Yard, Pennsylvania. We're moving back to the state and this will be our home address in the future. If you need an interim address, you can use my mom, which is in Reading, which is one oh nine Charles Street, Reading, Massachusetts, so.
Welcome back.
Cool.
Yeah, definitely welcome.
So, what I did is I submitted an ASBIL, the driveway's in, the utilities are in. The drainage system is in. The only thing left to do is the septic system, install a well and a building. So, all those permits will be, are either obtained or will be obtained. So, I'm just trying to close out the driveway portion of this so I can get back up into the site and then release my bond, so I can close out that portion of it.
Okay.
And you need the extension for how long?
Uh, let's go for a year.
Yeah.
Cause...
Did you submit that in, I'm looking...
Yeah, it's in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, especially now with the winters coming up, you're limited now.
I'm limited and builders are crazy, so.
Yeah, I'm gonna give you the time that you need.
Yep.
Make things happen.
Yep. Um, there are, there's described, there's differences between the plan that's submitted to you and the plan that was approved, they're all in a good way. Um, the driveway as it was approved was for twelve percent grade, it's actually ten percent is what we got it down to in the field, so we don't have to worry about that.
Play department's gonna look at that one.
Fire Department should be very excited and happy. Uh, there is no gas installed, um, it was a ridiculous price, so we're just gonna use propane up in the back. Um, there are two utility, uh, so two electric conduits, cause that's what the electric department wanted, um, they're both scheduled forty, they go all the way up in the back. We raised grade instead of digging into rock, except in two locations, I hammered for a couple of days, um, but for the most part, everything meets the electric department's criteria.
Perfect.
Um, what else is there? Uh, the drainage system, there was an outlet pipe on the drainage plan, um, it was actually a foot above grade as designed, so I put in a little spillway instead of the drainage pipe.
Okay.
Um, there is no other change.
Okay. You know, obviously being your property, you're not just a contractor, so you're taking the extra step, because this is where you can be living in your residency, so it only stands to reason.
Exactly.
And how the neighbors, uh...
Uh, as far as I know, they're, they're happy and fine, I've talked with most of them except for the two way down on the end of, uh, Pheasant Lane, um, I haven't had any direct complaints, I don't know if Annie, you've heard anything, so.
That's a good thing.
Yeah, that is.
Good, good.
Now, last time, uh, the prior person talked about some kind of, um, barrier with trees, now that doesn't...
I think that's in the, uh...
Oh, so that's already been included, so whatever it was...
I don't think, he won't do plantings until the end.
So, um...
I was just curious, because what I'm saying to you is, I'm not, I'm not telling you what to do.
Yep.
All I'm saying to you is, I remember last time this was put forward to us, a lot of the neighbors were having complaints and they wanted to have some kind of tree line or something, what do you call it?
Uh, buffer trees.
Buffer trees, yeah.
That's all I'm saying, so all I'm saying to you is be prepared.
Sure.
That in case they do say that, you know what I'm saying, I don't think we require it per se, but...
I think it was...
We selectively went through all the trees and left up as many as we could in the process, there's actually more trees up than with other plants, so.
We talked to the neighbors.
Yep.
I'm just saying though, just be prepared.
Sure, not a problem.
It's me.
I think it's all, it should be all spelt out in here.
Yeah.
Whether or not...
The buffer I did include in your meeting packet.
Yeah.
Yeah, the buffer trees are as a, as needed.
Yeah.
Where they go, once, once you're done.
Yep.
Right.
So, that's on there.
It was more for that, where you come up and turn in, and actually come up behind the neighbors' houses in Pheasant Lane.
Can you point it out on the plan, cause I'm not quite sure where you're talking about? Behind someone's backyard.
You're coming in behind somebody's backyard, I think it was...
There's a lot here, he's a contractor, there's a lot here, um, there is a thin spot here...
I think it's up here, I think it's up here.
So, there's a thin spot here, which I do want to turn around, um, thank you, um, there is a thin spot in this location, which I'm probably gonna put in a bunch of eastern white pines, which is on that area, so.
I think there was like four or six, six footers, we'd have to, I...
You'd just walk in at the end and...
Correct.
Yes.
That was it, that was, it was just to the...
Yeah, that was pretty much the only complaint from a neighbor.
Yeah, I've actually talked to this guy.
Down in the utilities, yeah.
He's very...
Oh, perfect.
Good, all right.
Perfect. Sounds like it's a win.
We'll send this out to T E C?
Yeah.
For review and then...
Seen a motion to extend till December thirty-one, twenty twenty-three?
December thirty-one or January?
No, he said a year, so.
Add a year on to it, I doubt I'll need more than a year, it's just the contractors right now are crazy on the pricing and timing and...
Thirty-first of next year.
I have almost everybody under contract.
So, a renewable extension, that's, first steps ends on December thirty-first.
Okay.
Twenty twenty-three, and, and then a second, a second motion is to send that out to T E C for review for the ASBIL.
Perfect.
All right, you wanna fly the motion?
No motion. Did you get that?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second it.
So, on the bond release part of it, as soon as T, T E C approves it?
Approves and gives us, is that a good number?
Will release the driveway portion of the, um, the bond?
Yeah, as soon as they come back and say that's the right number, yeah.
Okay. Any discussion from you guys?
No, seen fine.
Do you want to amend the motion?
Include the mo, well, we're into the motion for sending out to T E C with a future bond release based upon review and final numbers.
As approved by T E C and then we're just immediate bond release, so he doesn't have to come back to the board.
Yep.
Perfect.
Okay, so we got the motions.
He's seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Just one second, Andy, could you read the motion, I just wanna hear it.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we may need to go back and do that with the, um, Wally moves to issue a renewable extension until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, um, sorry, um, and to send out the ASBIL to T E C per peer review with a future bond release if T E C approves the ASBIL.
Okay, you guys go with that, do you have anything to add, or?
No, it's good.
Okay.
Good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes?
Cool.
Good luck.
Have a nice night.
Thank you. Good luck.
Okay, next up, discussion changes to the bylaws of an A and R lot.
We'll make this simple. Since we all got the long discussion, if you don't mind.
And Wally has the floor because he is going to take the floor whether we like it or not.
Yeah, so, that's true. So, way back when, when, when some of you, you know, may have been knee-high to a hubcap, uh, in nineteen ninety-six, I wrote the initial, um, three oh three, four, five, and six, which have copies of here, if you haven't seen that before, you can pass that down just so everybody gets an eyeball on it. And one of the problems that we were having and that we did have that triggered this, this lot, and you've heard me describe this, but it actually exists, um, and it comes down, and it was one of many lots that was put in, and it was a thirty thousand square foot lot total before the zoning change, so everybody did the every other lot in different ownership to protect themselves, which only protected them for so long. So, this one particular lot, which kinda looked like this, the problem was, is that the last six feet over, um, width on the lot...
I know who he's talking about.
For thirty feet, so that this kinda thinned right out, and this is a bad drawing of this, but it was only, so from the point out thirty feet, it was only six foot wide. So, we walked this and you could go like this and be in three people's property at the same time.
But you can go like that and be in two people's property at any given time too, if the lot is a square lot, so...
So, true, so what we did was, now, this was a thirty thousand square foot lot, the other problem with this is, is that in this thirty foot, thirty foot section here, it's really not usable, I mean, even if you get a narrow shed in there, other than, and down towards the point, you really couldn't get your lawnmower down there, I mean, it was that, it was that closed off. So, what we did with, um, with Cameron Engineering at the time is we came up with a lot of different calculations as to, you know, what would work, and what's hap, what was happening at the time is people, you know, move into town and, you know, back then they were paying half a million, now it's almost a million for a house, and they couldn't use sections of their land, they couldn't do things, so we came up with a couple of things.
Still can't use sections of the land whether it's wet?
Well, that's different.
Conservation restriction, whether it's boundary restrictions?
So, we came, that's where the C B A came in, so, so what we did is we added just a couple of things. We added that you couldn't go any narrower than eighty percent of the frontage, which basically an hundred fifty foot lot narrowed it down to a hundred and twenty. Then we put in a hundred foot diameter circle, okay, which was a hundred percent buildable, and the intent of this circle was, you can put your house in there, anything that you can fit in here, this all has to be contiguous buildable area, so that takes care of the waterage, cause we were getting two acre lots, but, you know, you only had twenty thousand people, you could do anything, right? So, we put this circle in, um, so that if a homeowner gets his house in here and he wants to put in a pool, a shed, and a second shed, if it fits in this circle, okay, he can put it anywhere he wants, so he doesn't have to go in for zoning variances either. The other thing that came into play that we put this in is that the description on this hundred foot circle is outside the setbacks, okay, and somehow this got missed on something, which we saw in the recent subdivision, you'll see these circles that got bumped right up, and that, that violated what the, I mean, somebody changed it, so we're gonna put it back.
There's been a, an adoption by CM of a percentage.
Okay, so, so I'm going to why we wrote this and what I think we should do, okay? So, this is why this was put in, a hundred foot diameter circle on the C B A, the C B A contiguous buildable area, so you didn't get a two acre lot, but only ten thousand square feet was buildable, ba, basically useless land unless, you know, you wanted all that conservation land and you weren't gonna build a home on it. So, this was put into play with a circle outside these setbacks, so you didn't have to go in and get a variance if you put your garage in and you're bumping up against the setbacks, if you were in this circle, you were free and clear to do whatever you wanted to do in there without a variance from the Z B A, okay? And then that came into, uh, again, going over to eighty percent of the frontage, so you didn't get these pie lots, which we saw recently, again, only a little bit different, okay, so that this last section of the lot was completely unusable. So, it's set up, and that was what was put into in nineteen ninety-six, and then during one of the zoning changes, I think there may have been a little confusion recently, and somehow it was dropped out. And it seems like a good idea until you get like the latest subdivision that we saw come in here and you start seeing the problems. Now, the developer's gonna build it, the new homeowners aren't here yet, they're gonna come in and they're gonna try to do what every homeowner would like to do, improve their property, they wanna put a shed in, they wanna put a swimming pool in. Well, some of them with these circles on those particular lots are gonna need variances on the sideline setbacks, cause it's gonna be right up against them because this wasn't in effect. So, my recommendation to the board is, and since we've already got a history on this, and it was very successful for almost thirty years, um, is put that language back, we'd have to renumber it cause, to fit into the, the current zoning book, and I was, and if the board votes it, put it onto the next warrant, and the town's gonna vote it in, um, by two-thirds, but we can explain what happened.
Let me ask you a question, so, for the record and for the cameras?
Yeah.
This fifteen foot buffer, what you refer to?
It's a side set, no.
Side set?
Setback, yeah.
So, that is to prevent what, any...
So, you don't have to go to the Z B A and get a variance to put your shed up, or your garage, or your swimming pool, or your cabana, or any other structure.
So, now that, is this one hundred foot circle that you refer to, is that enough area for somebody, cause again, somebody owns this property here and here?
Well, it, that's the minimum.
Okay.
So, if you wanna, if you wanna go crazy with that.
Okay, as long as you have the ratio?
Right, right.
And that's what you're referring to?
So, let me ask you this, a three hundred and thirty feet lot length in a ninety foot width depth, and it's gonna meet the criteria and the setbacks, but it's not gonna meet the building circle, what do you do?
It's not gonna, well, then, then it's not an approved building on the zoning, so the zoning change will, will put the lot in, now, are you talking pre-existing non-conformance or you're talking brand new out of the box subdivision?
No, I'm talking about an A and R lot.
So, a brand new A and R on a raw piece of land should be able to comply with this?
But I, I know one that didn't comply.
Okay.
So, what's the purpose of a setback?
So, the setback is so you're not encroaching on...
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, but if you meet the setbacks, if you meet the setbacks, you have to have a circle.
Well, the, the circle goes in with the setbacks, so that's why...
But again, I, I would ask the question of a, a long elongated lot, three hundred and thirty feet by, let's say, ninety-five, and you can't put that circle there because...
Can't get the hundred foot circle in.
You can't get the hundred foot circle.
Right.
So, that's, that's an issue for the Z B A to grant the variance, and then that would, should be granted.
They shouldn't have to grant the variance if it meets the setbacks, see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
This is, this is where the problems arise.
But that was an existing lot, wasn't it?
It was an A and R lot.
Yeah, but wasn't it an existing lot, it wasn't created?
Oh, um...
Which would also come under pre-existing law performance.
It was created, no, it was created, I created it, it was...
In what year, roughly?
Two thousand thirteen, maybe, fourteen.
Mm-hmm, and that was a commercial?
Yeah, and then how do you deal with commercial lots?
Is there a difference?
Well, this is the residential section that we're working on.
Is there a difference between, what do you refer to?
Well, because you're gonna have to go, but typically a lot in the commercial structures aren't usually, you know, designed...
But that was thrown at me for the commercial side of it, the hundred foot circle was thrown, even though the setbacks are fifty, twenty-five, twenty-five, and twenty-five...
And the commercials owned, and came under special permit.
Correct, but the circle was still thrown in.
Mm-hmm, and so what was the solution to that, since that happened? What did they do, they give you the waiver?
I forget what we had to do.
Write it into the special permit.
I'd have to ask my engineer.
Because it was a larger dimension, it was waived.
It wasn't gonna be a house, there wasn't gonna be a swimming pool, there wasn't gonna be a septic system, there wasn't gonna be a shed.
And that's where we had most of the problem, because it's not the commercial buildings that we have issues with, it's, it's Harry homeowner, new resident to Groveland comes in and wants to put in a swimming pool and he can't, and that's what we were, that's what we were coming up against in the late eighties and the early nineties.
You can't, you won't be able to put, you know, as the, as found land gets found and gets tighter.
Correct.
You know, and somebody comes in for an A and R lot that meets the setbacks that you have to approve, that circle's gonna become a problem, do you know what I'm saying?
Well, I do, but I don't.
Not everybody is gonna, everybody may want a pool, but not everybody's gonna be able to put one in, you're gonna have a house, probably gonna have a garage and a shed, doesn't mean that everybody can have a pool.
So, so bypass the pool for a second, because you're right, not everybody wants one, and it's kinda like a boat, um, but if you wanna put a shed in, or anything else for that matter, I've seen people try to, you know, put patios back there, it doesn't matter, it's, we're trying to, to get...
But patio's not a, it's not a buildable structure.
It was a, it was a, it was a stone, one example was a sown structure and then it had a roof structure over it to cover it, and so it was a structure on that, but that's only one that I can remember, and that's, that's been a long time, but...
We have a bylaw that doesn't allow open ear.
Contractors, yes.
Contractors, yes.
Yeah.
Interesting.
Um, so, anyway, what, what this is, and this worked up until just a couple of years ago, and we didn't see any issues with this until this new subdivision, now, what, what'll be interesting is to see what does that future hold for that subdivision five years from now, are we gonna, are there gonna be any problems, and that'll just prove that this was successful, but all we're doing is putting, as, you know, putting the candle back on this, this was live since ninety-six and was omitted in the rewrite somehow, um, but it would have helped out a lot.
So, obviously somebody challenged that hundred foot circle in order to rewrite the bylaws to take away...
I think it was just omitted, that, because nobody, I, I wasn't there that day, I guess, and I wasn't able to explain why we put it in place, and this is why.
Wally, what was, what was changed, the hundred foot circle was taken out, or the fact that it has to include the setbacks?
Well, I don't think, no, we would have to talk to Sam, we did adopt, I think it was an eighty percent, wasn't it a percentage of the circle that had been used?
Well, we got the eighty percent rule of the frontage and the lot width, so that's in, that was in play.
The lot width was taken out, we still have the circle.
Yeah, cause we've talked about the circle and other, right?
But the circle, but the circle now, the, the language was taken out, so the circle can bump right up across...
It can include the setback areas, which, right.
Right, which defeats the purpose of what the circle was for.
Yeah, exactly.
So, so that language and, and you know, this is gonna get opened up.
And the, and the minimum width is not there, which is what we were...
Right, right, so, the suggestion to the board tonight is just fly the language that was existing for almost thirty years, okay, we gotta have a hearing on it anyway, bring Sam in, open it up, we got time, it's not gonna, you know, for the spring warrant, and then...
I don't know, we don't got much time, do we?
Yeah, spring warrant's April, right, was it?
We have to get this done by end of February, or like, which with public notice, we need at least two weeks in the paper.
You got Christmas coming, so we're not gonna have probably another meeting.
Yeah, so you'd have, you had hearings in, um, end of January at the earliest, um, typically it's for something that's existing like this, that, you know, we have one anyway, and we'll see, and then is amendments on the, on the floor?
So, based on the timeframe, it's important that this is, is there a way that we could just shelf this until we have more time to get the proper meetings and that way?
No, I, I don't know. I would just say, let's Sam come in and I wanna hear what he has to say.
So, why don't we schedule...
You can even do it by phone call or Zoom.
Well, what I was thinking wa, was, vote the changes, set a hearing in between, cause we're gonna run out of time with that, and then tweet for the hearing, we have to have the, the language if we're gonna change it, or we can change it in the hearing.
So...
And then we recommend afterwards, after everybody's input, if we change the language, eliminate something or add something, that would be the final to get it to the warrant, so you just reserve a spot.
I'm a little hesitant to just vote the changes like tonight, without...
Well, I, I agree with you not to vote these changes exactly, but to vote, to put a change in and have the hear, talk to Sam and then the final language, this is just two of that were existing at the time.
So, this is just basically a rough draft, or just re-institution, re-institution, yeah.
We're gonna, we're gonna vote something, and we're gonna have to know what we have to vote in, and I don't know...
Which is the original language, that's what we're actually doing, where we vote for the original language to be now put back in to...
Put back in.
To put it back in, and that stood and it passed and it passed a town meeting and it was there for almost thirty years.
That's the answer, the original language.
And then in the hearings, there may be stuff to add, things may have changed, and we can do that at the end of the January or first week of February.
But we can set the starting point of what we think it should be, right?
Yeah, that's right, and then, and then, you know, we vote the final language to send it to the warrant, and I've been on a lot of these zoning hearings, where you start off with, you know, one paragraph and it ends up to be four, um, to put it in, so, but this, I'm just explaining why we did it then, and you just saw one of the subdivisions of what happened when this wasn't in there, okay?
But the, I, you know, the subdivision met all the, the criteria and setbacks.
Met all the criteria at the time, you are absolutely correct, but if this was in here, it would have been a, a different looking subdivision, and it would have been a nicer, um, yeah, there would have been a lot of elimination probably, but...
Excuse me, so what you're really saying is, with this original language, once it was, as it was put in, and people started to develop, they knew their criteria, they knew the circumference, would you say?
Right.
And so there was no grade, and all you're asking is to put the original language back in, so in the future, there is no more controversy or pushing the barriers.
Well, there's always gonna be controversy.
Well, yeah, yeah, but you know what I'm saying though, but people are gonna try to push the barriers, but at least now we could always say, you've got this area to work within.
The argument...
Cause there, there is still the variance argument, I mean, avenue.
But that's, you, the problem with the variance argument is there's only three criterias really for some variance, right? Pork chop lot, some kind of a structure in the way where you need to move the foundation to the left-hand feet, and, um, I, I don't think a hardship is gonna meet the variance.
Pre-existing non-conformant, it depends on what it is, commercial, uh, on the commercial buildings is special permit, so, so that would dictate that rule.
Well, I get there's waivers, right, so in commercial, there's gonna be waivers, but it's a whole different setback for commercial.
Right, so, so in, in my tenure here, thirty years, and since we wrote that, and that was passed at town meeting in nineteen ninety-six, and one of them was ninety-five actually, okay, we didn't have any issues, it was a, and it, and it wasn't something that we threw a dart on the board and said we're gonna do it, we, we went like three years of engineering and everything else with it, um, to back this change up, and at the time, other towns were doing something similar, matter of fact, I saw some language, I forget what town it was you attached, um, that was very similar, um, it, it had the percentage of the frontage to the area of the lot.
There's gonna be, there's gonna be a different way of doing it, I think, without...
Well, that's where we open up for the hearings and we get Sam involved and we see what's changed in thirty years and, and if there's...
I remember Sam's, you know, take on that.
Yeah, well, I, I don't know if Sam actually saw this with the, with the original language, I mean, but he's the zoning enforcement officer, he's the guy that, that rules, so absolutely get his input on this.
Oh, yeah, I wanna hear from the guy.
So...
So, in the meantime, we're going to allow the original language to be submitted, but not, we're not, not, not permanently attached, how do we...
It's a proposal.
It's a proposal because it has to go to town warrant anyway, so it has to go to town.
That's what I'm saying, like a proposal that we accept the original language.
So, the, so the motion would be to adopt the old language on three oh three, four, um, five and six, which is just a chart on six, and a proposal to change the zoning bylaws, to put back the original language.
But how's this have to do with an A and R? This is gonna be a lot, this is gonna be adopted for every...
New homeowner.
Every subdivision.
Yes.
Every subdivision plan, so what discussion was in A and R tonight?
So, brand new A and R coming in that is drawn off a, off a parcel, or was it a pre-existing non-conformant, and then it's also an A and R protected from a zoning change for three years, so, and we thought we were gonna see a stampede on that, by the way, we didn't.
We didn't see, yeah.
Didn't see anything with the zoning changes and stuff like that, and it's a reasonable Didn't see anything with the zoning changes and stuff like that. And it's a reasonable change. It actually makes, produces a better lot, which is why we spent so much time years ago doing this. You know, is this an overburden?
But I think the problem, the other problem, if you go back to the pie-shaped lot and it meets the frontage. It has to be, by the criteria, it has to be passed.
Area and frontage and access by the frontage on the handbook, yeah.
And that's it. Your hundred foot circle isn't gonna comply. It's not gonna be relevant.
No, it, it meets an A and R lot, but is it, but is it, is it a buildable lot? Is the, the second question. So, and that's up for, in this case, Sam to determine afterwards. But if you're, if you're sketching out a brand new A and R today. Out of a ten acre parcel and you're gonna do a one acre building lot, you should be able to comply with all this. Okay. And then if it, and if it was a pre-existing A and R from twenty-five years ago, thirty years ago. Then it's pre-existing non-conformant with a change, which happened prior to.
What about the, what about the homeowner that has a house and a, and a buildable lot next to it? That doesn't meet the, the building setback.
Well, he's protected.
Doesn't meet the building circle, but meets all the setbacks and criteria for an A and R lot.
He's protected from three years on this anyway. If it's an existing, if it's an existing, so.
So like McCombsky, uh, one sixty-six, he would have to register that at the registry. Before our public hearing. No, before our public hearing for it to be protected. Because I don't, I, I don't have the plans in front of me, so I can't say for certain, but I'm pretty sure those lots, the circle was outside. Of, or sorry, within the setbacks.
Within the setbacks and, and the ratio of frontage wasn't there.
The frontage was there.
Frontage was there, but the, oh yeah, the eighty percent moving back.
Eighty percent wasn't there.
Yeah, so, yeah, Wally, he would have to, he would have to record that soon, but like a lot like that, not yet. If you look at the Zillow listing, um, no, he hasn't.
What's your take on this, DJ Ivan?
So I'd like to see more of what the existing shows to what the new, the new proposed would look like, to kind of see the, the layout. Um, I agree, I, I kind of like the idea of the circle within the setback, you know, because everything I've seen so far. That I've been here at a short time, all these circles have been almost right up to the property line. I mean, they've been right, they've been out within the, outside of the setbacks where the setbacks should be. And I don't, I think that what Wally's saying is that if, if we create this. Put this, reintroduce the old bylaws that we alleviate that. Whereas that last, um, when we were talking about the triangle in the back corner, I didn't like the way that looked at all. I didn't, I didn't like that. But it fell within criteria of the bylaws, so we had no choice but to pass it. But it just looked like. Only sixty percent of that lot was usable. Everything else was just kind of a waste. That little strip was nothing.
It's a different shape, but that's, that's exactly the problem.
It met the criteria, so.
At the time.
My point would be if it meets the criteria of an A and R handbook, right, of the law.
But why would anyone want to create an A and R lot that wasn't buildable? Because we would ha- ask them to label it an unbuildable lot.
No, my point would be, even though it doesn't meet the building circle and somebody's gonna try to create an A and R lot. Based off of lot size and area and access and frontage, they're gonna challenge the circle.
Well.
By introducing the original language.
Let's go by history for a second. Okay, so again, we, we were running up against this. Um, in the eighties and in the early nineties. We were start, we thought then that the good, good tracts of land were, um, were not there. So we were trying to come up.
Really not much more land around if you.
Yeah, there, there are some, you know, some farms and some other stuff, but you're right. So we put this in a place because we were having a, a rush at the time of everybody with a new house coming in. That were going to get variances on the side setbacks and some of the other stuff. And, and so it, um, I forget which member came in, might have been Freer, and he says, you know, we, we got a brand new house. Guy just bought it. It's like half a million bucks and he's coming in for a variance, like on week two. He says, why wasn't this put into the design stuff? And then you look back at it and the design of the subdivision was actually done like seven years prior to that. And then, so here come the new homeowners through. So we put this into play. I spoke a town meeting on it. We gave the intent a reason. That's why I wanted to find the, the language for the intent on the town meeting in, um, I think it was March. In ninety-six, because anytime we did a zoning change, we put an intent with it, so people could understand it. Why are you making that change? What's it gonna do? And then later, like right now, someone can come back and say, what was your intent with this? Or what is the intent of this in case, you know, the board change is over and. And, uh, you know, they're looking at dinosaur worship for that. But you just saw it with now two plans. You had the two A and Rs that just came in. And then you had a subdivision plan that came in last year. Okay, and all of them had problems with this circle.
The question goes to that specific A and R plan that just came in that, you know, we all felt the same way, but. Do you think that's gonna stop it?
Not that plan. No, it's already approved. No.
No, 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 no. If it came in with a circle, had it possibly meet the circle.
Well, you wouldn't have to if that's, unless it expired, because it's already approved.
Let's not, no, 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 let's say it's adopted. Let's say you come in. Let's say he doesn't have the circle, but he meets.
You mean on the same lot?
Yeah, same lot.
On the same lot, so different day.
After that's in place, same thing comes in.
Same thing comes in five years later. It got adopted. But he's got the area, he's got the frontage and he's got the access.
So it would prop, then he's gonna have to go to ZBA post and try to get a waiver to the circle only.
So ZBA is probably gonna grant the circle waiver.
Well, that's, that's their department.
Right, right. But we put it in to say, and this is what we requiring. If they wanna go above, beyond that, then the zoning board will go ahead and approve that.
Yeah, we can't.
We can't control what the zoning board allows.
Right, and then in the zoning board of appeals is exactly what it's for, does the CBA, and they have, they have the authority to do that. And sometimes it makes sense. Hey, I'm not gonna build in there anyway. You know, I got something else going in here. And it, it's gonna be by application by application.
But as a baseline, it's pretty good.
Yeah, this, this was another, um, two forty-five Center Street or one forty-six King. That was another one where the circle was gonna be built out of.
You can put anywhere in the lot.
Somebody before, somebody before was coming in, and they were talking about building in the circle, but they wanted to build out of the circle.
You can. Just know, if you've got a, if this whole lot is a hundred percent contiguous buildable, it doesn't matter where this is, you're just gonna show a circle.
People get confused thinking they have to build in the circle. People get confused thinking that, I had a woman call me. I'm not gonna mention her name, but on this lot, she thought that she had a bill within the circle and they were gonna spend a bunch of money. Designing the house to meet in the circle. And I said, I don't think you have.
Well, that's up in, and someone didn't explain it to that individual, and I'd gladly do that, but, um, and I.
Circle can go anywhere.
Many of those calls, circle can go anywhere. It's the circle only, the only restriction to the circle is that it has to be inside the contiguous buildable area, the CBA calculation. Which is what that chart was. Okay, but if you got a hu- if you got a flat piece of property here, all of it's usually buildable. So it doesn't matter. You put it in the back, put it in the front.
So that would have to be in the language saying that, you know, the circle's there to protect.
It is. It's on that, if you actually look at three oh three, six, it says that. Um, it gives you the calculation.
Four and five, you didn't say anything about six.
Actually, I did.
Tattoos on yourself in these things.
It's right here.
Like Bible verses on your arms.
Illustration, three, six, three, six, right here.
Three, four, five, the three oh three.
So anyway, but it, it tells you what the calculation is in square footage to meet, you know, the RA, RB, RC districts. So, um, so that's in there. But again, you know, this is a spirited discussion. It'd be great to have Sam in here during the hearings and see what anybody else is. But I can tell you from, you know, looks like the longest planning board member here, um, by a few decades. Um, we didn't.
You're like a faucet.
This, a dinosaur, they're gonna call me Dino soon. Um, but we didn't get any challenges on this and even some of the builders.
I believe I challenged you on that circle.
Not when we did it. Not when we put it through in ninety-six.
No.
On, on that. Yeah.
But this is something that's been there. It was missed when we did the rewrite.
Yeah.
Uh, we don't know if it was actually pulled out.
I don't remember if it was missed or was not.
Deliberately pulled out or deliberately pulled out.
Sam, Sam will be able to clarify.
And that's why I say let's, okay, the discussion's going the way, it looks like everybody's favorable for the circle.
Yep.
Okay, so why don't we bring, talk, bring Sam in for discussion? I think he can clarify the legality of the circle, because I think there was a challenge on it. So.
I think the reason there was a challenge on it with the most recent subdivision is because the bylaw states that the, a circle with a diameter equal to eighty percent. Of the applicable required frontage must be able to be located within the lot lines of any lot. So it specifies lot lines, not setbacks.
Look at the original language.
Oh, no, I'm, I'm not agreeing or disagreeing. I'm just saying that is.
The current language was, it's kind of summarized in comparison to the detail.
Yeah, and it's very clear in this that it does not have to meet the setback requirements.
But in there, we put it into the setbacks to, to eliminate the confusion and also the intent. What was the intent?
Sam changed the language.
You know.
I think he did.
Passes, that's okay. I mean, that's his job.
Yeah, I, I think, I wanna say that circle, I, I kind of remember, you know, he did change it.
And you know what? It, all of our regulations are living documents. You know, I can tell you that when I wrote with my fellow board members, the original subdivision control law. In ninety-seven, it took us years to bring up to speed. And we thought it was the greatest piece of legislation ever written. Okay, for the town of Grover. And we went, well, the fun part was we went down to record it in the registry of deeds in the, in the land court. And they hadn't seen one of those in thirty years. They didn't know what to do with it. They actually had to call Boston. It was, it was kind of a comical situation. But you know what? It wasn't a year before a crafty developer shot a hole in it. Who were like, wait, what? And we thought, we thought of everything. So it's not, um, as time goes on. Um, some stuff will go in, but some stuff requires changing. The zoning bylaws, the subdivision control law, the master plan. That's why the master plan's only a five-year document.
It's ten.
Ten now? Okay, there we go.
See, he's aging. It's decades. It's just going by. He doesn't realize.
Gosh, you know, they jacked it to ten.
Take it from the girl that wasn't there in the decades when he started.
Takes five years to write. So anyway, but it's a renewable and it's a living document and it's subject to changes.
So let's bring, I, I would say we're not gonna motion to do anything. We're just gonna bring Sam into the next discussion. I don't think it needs a motion.
I, I think it just needs a motion for a slot.
Okay.
Uh, proposed changes to.
Adopt the original language.
To, to, yeah, proposal to adopt back the other language with input from the zoning enforcement officer, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, I think a motion to, to begin the formal process to move forward, to move forward.
Okay.
Just my recommendation.
I haven't heard a motion from you, DJ, so why don't you, please have a motion?
Sure. I make a motion to investigate further of adding the three oh three, four, five and six. That would.
The old numbers.
The old numbers.
Wally, show us the tattoo.
Back into the current bylaws, um. Barring our review and.
Hearings.
Hearings and committees and whatever else we need to do to make it legal. Cause I'm, I'm okay with change. No, that's, that's my motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 I'm okay with change as long as it's done legally and I don't want to make it more difficult for our residents to have to build, so.
Either, nor do I. I, I don't either, so that's.
Really.
Well, I wanna, it's, it's up for discussion.
Motion approve the minutes?
All right. Meeting minutes, approval of, uh, November fifteenth. Minute meetings, minutes. So, have a second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Town planner update?
Things are going well. One of the lots we approved for a lease for one oh six King has applied for building permits. Um, I received the nine thousand dollar check for the affordable housing inclusionary fee for that one. Um, still waiting on the fee for lot three for that, so that hasn't been fully released yet. Um, we'll be receiving an email from you when it's time to sign off on that. What else?
I think I mentioned at the last meeting that we received a grant through Mass Development, um, for a site readiness grant. For, um, one fifty Center Street, also known as Strawberry Fields. It was a one hundred and ninety-one thousand dollar grant, which is super exciting. Um, so we kind of just had our first team meeting regarding that, so we're compiling old information. That was gathered on that property from the previous development that was proposed there to kind of just give the team as much information as they want. To move it forward. Um, so that's exciting. You'll be hearing more about that as the process moves forward. Um, Sam, Rebecca and I are looking at other zoning changes that we might propose, really kind of simple stuff. That's more like, as we've gone through it, for example, someone was asking us about, in our bylaws and our, uh, use chart. We have something called a non-exempt farm that doesn't have a definition. So kind of just being like, okay, so we need to add a definition for this thing that we have in our table of dimensional uses. So little things like that, nothing as, um, kind of impactful as the proposal we were just speaking about. Um, and other than that, the master plan, um, or comprehensive plan is moving along well. Um, should be receiving draft information for that by the end of the year. Public hearing probably February, maybe March, um, for that process. Then as far as developments go, eight ninety-five Salem Street, they're anticipating paving at the beginning of next week, I believe. Um, that's going well. Oakland Terrace is in the final phases of getting their survey done for their as-built. We're working on Billis Way. Um, we recently, I was speaking with our water and sewer superintendent. Um, the water and sewer shut-offs were never marked. Um, so that is gonna be holding up the as-built for that, um, because the water and sewer department will not accept it. The as-built until those are found. And that's gonna take a lot of time, unfortunately. Um, so we're working with the developer to try to get the process done, so hopefully we can get the road acceptance on the spring town meeting warrant. Um, it's Oakland Terrace Benjamin Street extension. They're making good progress as well. I think they were siding last week. So they're moving along well. That's really, it, nothing new, nothing really coming down the pipeline except for a. Eight thirty-three Salem Street is most likely gonna be applying for a special permit, um, for stormwater and. The aquifer. Um, but yeah, other than that. Oh, and next, thank you, next month, or whenever, what we need to discuss also is. I recently received back the, uh, technical review from T E C for the cell tower. So we just need to, um, make a motion to have that meeting. I've, um, technically, so first and third Tuesday of the month, the third Tuesday of this month is December twentieth. Um, I do not think that will give Verizon's team enough time to review T E C's comments. Um, which would leave our next, our, our next following meeting after that as January third.
So we'll motion to, uh, continue that to January third?
If, was it, were they up then? Or have they even, are they even aware of it?
Yes. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, I just got the T E C review back today, so they need time to, for their engineers. T E C didn't have, it was very, very minor, but with the holidays, I figure it might take them a little bit, you know, longer than two weeks. To get their responses back. But everything was super minor. I reviewed T E C's stuff and pretty straightforward.
So we're gonna do a motion.
So does January third work for people?
Yep.
I don't have my schedule for that, so.
Say yes.
Don't say yes if you can't. Please don't say yes if you can't.
I'll be all right.
Okay. DJ?
I abstain from conversation anyway, so.
Sorry?
Oh, he abstains from the conversation.
Part of that conversation, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I won't know.
January third?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
I won't know.
And Chris should be back too.
Yeah, I would think so.
Yeah.
Jim? Okay, okay. So then, yes, January third, please.
All right, so why don't we fly a motion to continue the Verizon tower to January third?
Have a second?
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 All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Abstain.
He abstained.
Abstain.
Thank you.
Motion, Drew?
Saturday, any?
Are we still having our meeting on the twentieth?
As of right now, no. Um, I have received nothing new, um, that's coming down the pipeline. Again, with the DeHulu or with Oakland Terrace, um, they should be right around the corner. Um, forgetting that as-built accepted and the bond fully reduced and kind of washing our hands of that. But until I have, I don't want to tell you guys yes if they're not gonna get it to me because they told me they would get it to me today. Or for this meeting, and they didn't. So I don't want to tell you yes and then have to like backpedal, so. I'm thinking it'll most likely be the third.
Thank you, Annie.
Yeah.
All right, I think that's all the business that we have. Anybody else have anything to add?
Good.
What do you think we should say? What do you think we should say to the town of Groveland and the good people, uh, wish them a happy holiday?
We may have a meeting on the twentieth, so.
But if not.
But if not, happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Hanukkah. Yeah, motion to adjourn at seven fifty.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night.
Good.
Thanks, Joe.